And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
McMullin.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Mayor Beadie.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Close session? We'll be in a closed session for personnel.
Are we allowed to?
You're always allowed to go in closed session.
Okay. I wanted to check. So we will add a closed session. I'll read a proclamation. This is on for Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of the city and state, whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption in roadway and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadway and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of ABATE of Illinois continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in our city and state presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past five years. Whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite and the safe sharing of roadways within the city of Streeter. Therefore, I, Tera Bida, Mayor of the City of Streeter and the State of Illinois, in recognition of over 30 years of ABATE and over 293,676 registered motorcycles statewide, do hereby proclaim the month of May Motorcycle Awareness Month. Okay, we'll open this up to public comments now. If you have a comment for council, you're welcome to come forward, state your name, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Do you have a question? We submitted a vacancy. Would that consider this or is that going to be addressed? I didn't see any.
Um.
No, it will be until next month. So I just got it. We have to notify all the neighbors. So it's, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda for next month. You're welcome to use your three minutes tonight if you wanted to give us a heads up, but we'll put it on the agenda for probably the first meeting of next month.
I'd rather speak when it's being addressed.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay, anyone else? With that, we'll go on to new business. Item one, Resolution 2024-17, East Main Street Sewer Project IDOT Permit. You get a motion and second to approve.
So move, second.
Okay, Moos with the motion and Tim Geary with the second.
So this, Mayor Council, this one is just for to approve the IDOT permit. If you remember, 1424 East Main annexed last fall, as well as there's a couple other homes that were already in the city. The sewer is on the south side of the road. If I've been working with IDOT for their work ongoing, work is over there to try to extend sewer, that we could service six homes already in the sewer, or already in the city, including that 1424, and then we'll also be able to eventually hook up eight more that are outside the city should they elect to. So this is to accept the permit, so then we can, IDOT will give us permission to do it. I'll bring back, you know, a bid or a change order to a project for you guys to look at to actually get the work done.
Any questions or comments? All right, Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item two, Resolution 2024-18, accepting a grant from Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Ozly, and authorizing the agreement between the City of Streeter and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
So move, second.
Motion and second, second. Okay, Moos with the motion and Matt with the second. And turn it over for discussion.
Okay, so this is the, we finally have the final formal grant agreement for the Ozly grant in Emerald Park. It's a hundred percent funding grant at the estimated cost of $219,900. So hopefully that's where it comes in, but if you guys approve this, we'll sign it, send it back. They'll sign and then we can finalize the design and go out to bid and hopefully maybe even start again this fall.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item three, Resolution 2024-19, authorizing and approving execution of an amendment to the agreement for operation and maintenance of the Streeter wastewater treatment facility between Veolia Water North America Central LLC and the City of Streeter. Can I get a motion and second?
So move, second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. And discussion.
This is the one I presented to you, gave you guys a copy of it at your last meeting. The city attorney did review it and made a couple of, fixed some spelling and capitalization and a couple of small issues. And you have that new one there in front of you for Illinois law. I will ask Rory Muntz, Veolia's regional overseer here, came in from Kansas today and was not on the survey, but wanted to see you guys, so I'll turn it over to him for now. And any questions, I'm happy to answer if my answers don't.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank you all for the relationship that you have with Veolia North America. It's been a great partnership. A lot of success stories are found in there. Also appreciate the care and effort that's been expressed by Mr. Palm in executing the contract. Total utmost professionalism. Just been with Jeremy recently. Excellent conversations, a lot of good dialogue to ensure that the wastewater plants operate as they should and that we're giving the max benefit of the contract. As I mentioned, I just joined with Veolia earlier this year, actually on the first of January. Prior to that, I operated municipal contracts in the state of Utah, Nevada, and then military contracts through California and Kansas. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any that are on the amendment or anything would be of support there.
I don't have any questions. Jeremy did a good job of filling us in and all the nuances of it, so I think we're good.
Yeah, as it's come forward for this amendment, there was a lot of realization and analysis of the prior years that we've been operating. More of a streamlined area to make it most beneficial for the city.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask Clerk to call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item four, a motion to receive and place on file, Plan Commission's recommendations. Following, one, Plan Commission Recommendation 2024-03, recommending approval of the award of a special use permit for, under provisions of Chapter 15, 1548-100, to allow for the installation of an electronic billboard zoned in a C3 general commercial for property at 1712 North Bloomington Street. And item two is Plan Commission Recommendation 2024-04, recommending approval of award of a special use permit to allow for the installation of an electronic billboard in an A-R-A single-family residential for Kind School property at 1207 Reading Street in Streeter. And then item three. Do we want to do these separately? Or am I good doing all three at once?
No, you can.
Okay. Yep, I just want to make sure. And then item three, 2024-06, recommending approval and granting an award of a facade grant to property owner Daniel Braden, 1726 North Bloomington Street, in the amount of $15,000. So with that, I get a motion and second.
So move, second.
Okay, Tim and then Dave Reed with the second. And any discussion on these? We will be voting on one and two, and then there'll be discussion regarding item three.
Presenting all these, approve all these?
No, 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 no.
No question.
Well, please, I'm.
Right, right.
Yes, yes, so we'll discuss the first two and vote on those. Item three, we will not vote to issue the facade grant tonight. We'll discuss it though. So, um, let's call the roll to receive and place on file.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Excuse me. Item five, Ordinance 2024-08, approving and authorizing a special use permit to petitioner Robinson Outdoor LLC, under the provisions of Chapter 15, 1548-100, to allow for the installation of an electronic billboard in a C3 general commercial zone on a portion of property at 1712 North Bloomington Street, Streeter, Illinois. Can I get a motion and second?
So move, second.
Okay, and discussion.
I think it's a good idea.
How high and near is it?
Hasn't seen anything for how high, how wide, how big?
It's at 260 square feet.
We have a gentleman here for Robinson.
Robinson is here, so yeah.
Might answer those questions.
Yes, so we got to answer those, but 15 feet to the bottom. Am I correct?
That's right. 13 feet to the bottom.
To the bottom of the sign, but it has to be set back for the power lines.
13 six.
13 six, so it would be back in the lot a little bit where the car was.
And how big will the billboard be? Billboard is two, right?
Yeah, the one facing the north end.
In that shape.
So it's gonna be like the billboard's at it, run it over there by, run the drive and.
It'll be that shape, but this is an electronic message board, so this will be, you know, LED digital and all that stuff.
So 260 square feet is 13 by 20 or is it?
It's 10 by 20, so 212 feet per face.
Okay, thank you.
What I like about this is that they're gonna allow the city to use it if there's an emergency, if there's a weather incident or something coming, we can use it. I think it's a good idea.
We can only use it if it's available.
Right.
He said we can only use it if it's available. I mean, if an emergency pops up, you know, we can't wait to see.
Matt.
Yeah.
It would rotate, correct? So it would have different messages.
Yeah, by state law, the state of Illinois, we rotate every 10 seconds. Just so you guys do know that on most of our digital billboards, we run at occupancy about 80%, maybe 85%. So that's still these 15%. The National Weather Service stuff that's on there, that doesn't matter if there's ads on there or not. It shuts, it shuts the whole ward down and turns into a vantage point system. And we don't control that. The National Weather Service Center does. Sometimes your local may have something on TV before we do, but that's the National Weather Service. They're a little bit behind. Would that be the same way as missing person? That is something that we will allocate with the local police department. Now, don't only put that with PD, we allow the fire department to get on there and put anything like they got an MDA boot drive or if they're getting some kind of benefit, you know, we will obviously be on there, public works. If they have a boil water order or something like that, we want them to get on. Anything that benefits the community. I know like our hometown, we have, we have a VAE fest every year and always we have a seminary picnic every year. We do more than our share to help promote all that stuff. That's what we would like for you guys to do as well. Utilize that, use that support for that. Any other questions? And also just to clarify one thing, we do have our digital billboards on automatic dimmers. So on an overcast day like we had today, it would actually dim the boards down automatically. We usually set our ratings below the state department, so we never have any issues with the state as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item six, Ordinance 2024-09, approving and authorizing a special use permit to petitioner Kind School, under the provisions of Chapter 15, 1548-100, to allow for the installation of an electronic message board in an R1A zoning on a portion of property at 1207 Reading Street. You get a motion and second.
So move, second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion and Matt with the second. And discussion. This one is going where the existing sign already is, so it's just gonna replace it with an electronic sign similar to St. Michael's School. And like, um, was it 9:00 PM that it's supposed to shut off?
That's correct.
Because it's in a residential neighborhood? Okay, any questions or discussion on that?
Jer, I see you sent notices to all the neighbors within 250, 300 feet. Anybody have any opposition?
No.
Just replacing that with the. Well, Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Okay, item seven, Ordinance 2024-10, annexing territory, family notice 538 Gulf Road to the City of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. You get a motion and second.
So move, second.
Okay, Dave Reed and then Moos with the second. And discussion. This was another annexation for sewer service, from what I've seen?
Yes, yeah, the annexation for sewer service, I believe. The work may have already up again. Or he was going to start it last week. The petitioner's husband is here tonight, and so, so there you go.
So he may want to abstain.
He's waiting on the rainy season to.
Yeah, the paperwork called and said he was gonna start. He has, he's paid the permit fee and all that stuff, so. If you annex it, they'll be ready to go.
Never opposed to annexation.
Well, maybe. All right, any other comments or questions? Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Even though I abstained.
You should abstain. This is your wife?
This is my wife, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
My son, actually.
Oh.
Abstained.
Yeah, just abstain.
Yay.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item eight, Resolution 2024-20, concerning take day solicitations for the City of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties. Get a motion and second.
So move, second.
It'll be all swell.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, Tim with the second. And discussion.
Two weeks ago.
I mean, we've discussed it enough, and everything we've suggested or Cheryl has suggested is in here. Did we always require insurance before? Like when the Lions bought for candy days, did they have to?
I don't know the answer to that question. My system might, maybe not.
Okay.
But we're gonna be better going forward.
Yeah.
It was typically.
I was just.
A lot of it on the consent agenda and that was, that was it.
I think it's a good idea to have, to have good insurance.
All right, then we'll, Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item nine, consent agenda, you get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of $923,366.60.
So move, second.
Okay, Matt with the motion, Tim with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 10 is discussion on the facade grant program for 2024.
So, yeah, so basically you receive and place on file, recommendation for the unanimous recommendations from Plan Commission, a couple of items ago for, that one was for Curly's Furniture. It was up on 1726 North Bloomington, so you got the memo there. But it's outside the downtown and by the program. Those have to wait until July to be funded. So you had that issue with that one, as well as one that was also recommended for approval back in January was the Vet to Vet, 1109, the former Coca-Cola site, so there's, but that was for two grants because they're on the corner. So Plan Commissions reviewed them and recommends them. It comes down to funding. So the issue is, is in the budget for fiscal year '24, you have six. So there's six in the budget, and you've approved already five. Those are the top ones, 114 North Monroe, 115 East Main, 423 East Main, and 805, 802 East Main, where we had that issue with the address. We're still trying to figure out, but it's, it's on the 802 side, but it's listed by County 825, that, the old Prairie Farms building there. So, but, two grants there. So five have been given out. You guys have voted and have given out five, and that work will happen. So the issue is, the Plan Commission's recommended three grants, the ones I just talked about, two for 1109 and 1726 North Bloomington. They're both outside the downtown, so they can't be funded until July anyway. So you've got, that's why we bring this for discussion. At last month's Plan Commission, you also had 915 East Main, which is downtown, which was tabled. Plan Commission wanted to see, the petitioner didn't make it to the meeting. They had some questions for her. So that'll be coming back to their main meeting for her to discuss. If it receives a positive recommendation, that'll come back to you then, and you'll have four grants to decide what to do with. And you'll have one in your budget. So it's something you can look at your budget and see if, you know, there's more money or we didn't put in the grant from the county, but I doubt we're here in time. And so the question, the main question for you guys is, of these, which, is there something you want to prioritize? And should we still continue to review applications at the Plan Commission level? This has happened before, but it's been later in the year. And so we're only in April and we've already, should we, should I tell applicants to just basically hold it for next year? Or continue to review them so you have a bigger pool to draw from when July hits? So that's the discussion.
I would think if we get one more that's on the Main Street, the true Main Street corner, then that could be the sixth one. But I don't, I think if we put six in the budget, we need to stick to the budget, in my opinion.
We can always alter the budget. Yeah, we have, Dave could work his magic and find somebody who can move around back into it. You never want to stymie economic development.
Well, I think we need to even look at the program in general. I mean, it's kind of straight away from, like, what's listed online is, I mean, people aren't following how it was intended. We were supposed to maintain the straight, straight line, and Sackey's moved their building in, and that 114 took out half a window.
There was always crooked.
Now you can see where it's straight before.
That was like years and years ago.
But I mean, but the 114 took out half a window. So I mean, I really think you need to kind of.
Review the program as well.
Yeah, I mean, go back to.
So right now it's first come, first served. If you already had a facade grant, you can't apply to the second half of the year. And if it's out of downtown, you're like the sixth, you're, five are from the TIF and five are, the sixth one is kind of in our general fund from outside. I'm kind of thinking of like, how do you, how do you decide? How do you do what? And I guess the options, and for me was, right now it's $15,000 and it would cover up. So up to $15,000, 80% of the cost of the projects. We could drop that to $10,000 for future years, change the program. You could get more grants with lower money. You can change the match percentage. You could even do something where you say, if you want a facade grant this year, here's the date you apply by, and you could score them, because there's some buildings that might need it more than others, and you can kind of pick that.
Those are suggestions for the future.
For the future. So I'm just saying, but I think we should relook at the program and just try to make some decisions for how to improve it going forward.
Yeah. But, you know, obviously we only have one available, and Vet to Vets asking for two. So we can't.
You can put one, or tell them, wait till next year, win more.
Yeah.
Yes, potentially. I mean, if all six get taken up or whatever we put in the budget for July, then, I mean, they're out of luck again. But I think the intention was to make downtown nicer. I drove by Curly's. I mean, I think it looks nice. Yes, it'd be nice to have two new doors, but, I mean, I don't know. I think I would rather focus on buildings that look terrible rather than helping someone remodel something that's nice and general already.
Can I make a suggestion? Since July is already part of our policy, that represents about the year of fiscal year. Last year, unaudited, we experienced another deficit, so we've had multiple, not a deficit, a surplus of about $120,000, $130,000. Again, unaudited, but we're fiscally solid right now. And so depending on where we're coming in at mid-year, the council can assess, you know, whether or not it's something that we can either go into reserves or reprioritize. We did receive good news over the last week. We sold about our insurance for general liability, mortgage cap. We had budgeted for a significant increase, but it actually came in around $60,000, $65,000 less than what we paid last year. And so there may be monies available, but again, it's, we have other things that may be going up in costs such as selling and taxes and so forth. But we're in a solid financial position. We've been very conservative in our expenditures over the past couple of years. And we've experienced multiple years of surpluses, and so, and we did that to fund our ambulance services because we knew we were going to have issues. So we did budget a deficit, but still uncertain as to whether or not we're actually going to experience a deficit for the year.
I do agree with Councilman McMullin that we need to concentrate on downtown. That was the intent. I wasn't alone when you guys put that together, but that was the intent, was to improve the downtown area. And we seem to be jumping all over the place with these facade grants.
Well, the downtown TIF does send up the order, the collision order.
Yeah, so the downtown.
I know the TIF does, but I think the, the idea of the facade was to improve our downtown.
That's what started it, and then we have one that we fund from the general fund every year, which is outside of the TIF, downtown TIF. So that's kind of where we're starting to see the expansion of the program.
Yeah.
Because there were buildings outside that could have used, that could use the help.
Even Time Out Ice Cream, it's got a Main Street address, but it's not the downtown area. It's outside of what I would consider downtown, so. We should hold on to them and wait till we get applicants, interaction in the 203, 400 block of Main Street. Especially 400 block. It really needs it.
Yeah, make that.
Okay, so where does that leave us? Do we want to hold off on these until?
Yeah, say we planned for six, so there's no reason why we can't prove another one. I think going beyond that, though, we need to look into it a lot deeper than just throwing it out there. I mean, a lot of these are businesses that aren't new, so I mean, it's not, you know, I don't think these places are needing these to keep going or to get going. I think it's, you know, these are established businesses that I think should probably be fine waiting eight months.
Well, if it was always first come, first served, and we're down to one, then I think we have to offer one to Vet to Vet. If they could just do one of their facades, either the west or the south, and they can wait on the other one. And if they want to, don't want to do just one now and one later, then we offer to Curly's, because they were next in line.
Time outs are in the downtown TIF.
They are, but they haven't, they haven't been approved for one. The Plan Commission tabled their application. So right now we really only have the two for Vet to Vet and Curly's that have been.
We can't approve a social law anyways, so.
Right, but those, those three have been recommended by the Plan Commission. Time out hasn't been recommended yet.
Well, I'm just saying if someone else from downtown. Well, I'm just saying, if someone else from downtown.
Right.
Came in before July, I would bump them ahead of Curly's or Vet to Vet, just based on location.
But we have one to spend now.
I, I was just, but you, you said it, by the, unless, you guys can do whatever you want, but I also, by, by the program rules, if you can amend, amend the program rules, program rules, the only one that can be awarded before July right now is timeout. So, so you would have to, that's a, you'd make a special provision to go around, because the rules say the downtown area, timeout, it actually goes to Iowa, so it's in the downtown area by the program. So first come, first served is timeout, that's just what I wanted to say, but you guys make the decision.
Could we grant that with, without the Plan Commission's recommendation?
Yeah.
No, so, so then we can't do it.
Yeah, so.
But we could do it next month, is what I'm saying, or we couldn't, you could, you bet to that until July.
Until July, yeah.
So if they come back next month, then I would say it's timeouts to get.
So we're, just see what happens next month, go from there, and future discussion on what we're gonna, or discussion further on what we'll do in the future with this program. I'm gonna hear this year. Okay, any city official comments? Anything over there?
I would like to remind everybody that Engle Lane Theater this weekend is having their open house. Their season doesn't officially open till May 19th, the first show, it's gonna be Crumpy Old Men Musical, but they're gonna have a preview of the theater on Sunday, and they're gonna do two performances of music from Sondheim. I don't know if that sounds exciting to anybody, but I'm not a big fan of Stephen Sondheim. But it's $10 at the door, you don't have to call, get reservations, and they will be doing tours of the theater. So if you've never been to Engle Lane Theater, you're missing out, it's a real asset to our community, so. Open house this weekend, come and you get to go backstage, check out the behind the scenes stuff. Just wanted to give them a plug.
Just to mention, Cheryl's working on the list of the lots for sale, just some extra data needs in, plugged in PIN number, when we want bids to be due and such, but that's in the process. And on Monday, I, I know council knows, but on Monday, expect a third sculpture by Don Noon to be placed on Merrell. He graciously loans those to the city at no charge and pays for the crane and everything to move those, so third one's going up, and it should be Monday.
And will that be down in the park or will it be?
It's like a triangle.
It's up top.
It'll be up top?
Yeah, I saw it, he formed up the concrete pad the other day.
With that, I will request a motion and second to go to closed session.
So moved.
Second.
For the purpose of bargaining?
Yes, thank you. I can have with the motion and then Dave Reed's second, and Dave Reed with the second. Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.